Let's call the regular meeting of the Morgantown City Council May 3, 2021 to order. At this time, I'd like to ask Chris Jernigan to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. If you please rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This time, I'd like to introduce council to my far right, Mayor Pro Tim Windecato, Chris Jernigan, City Council, Louie Vina, our City Attorney, I'm Ronnie Thompson, your mayor, Sally Sandy, our City Manager, Butch McSwain, City Council, Chris Hawkins, City Council, Kelly Russell is our Recording Secretary, and interpreters Danette Stillman-Bridges and Ernest Williams IV is our interpreters for the deaf community. We have several retirement invitations. Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you, Louie. I'd like to call on Reverend Beth Ann Miller from First Presbyterian in the North to lead us in an invocation. Beth Ann?
Gracious God, we give you thanks for this city of Morgantown surrounded by your magnificent creation. We are grateful for the knowledge, the creativity, the imagination, the passion and commitment of all who invest in its care and governance. May those who are gathered here tonight do their work in a spirit of wisdom, kindness, and justice. You've given them authority to serve. May they do so faithfully and for the welfare of all, so you will be honored and well-pleased. In Christ's name I pray. Amen.
Thank you, Beth Ann. Okay, we have some retirement resolutions. Our first is a resolution honoring Clarence Michael Faust. Resolution reads as, "Whereas Clarence Michael Faust was employed by the City of Morgantown as Aquatics Supervisor in the Recreation Department on March 19, 2001, changed to Aquatic Programs Supervisor on July 1, 2004, changed to Recreation Program Supervisor Aquatics on July 8, 2006, and whereas Clarence Michael Faust has faithfully served and given of his time and effort for the benefit of the citizens of the City of Morgantown for 20-plus years, he was instrumental in the development of the aquatics program in the Recreation Department with attention to detail and safety for our citizens always a top priority. And whereas Clarence Michael Faust has been a tremendous asset to the city in providing professional, prompt, and courteous customer service to its citizens, his longevity and commitment to his profession and fellow employees was always above and beyond regular duties. And whereas Clarence Michael Faust retired from the City of Morgantown as Recreation Program Supervisor Aquatics on May 1, 2021, and whereas the Morgantown City Council wishes to officially recognize the contributions of Clarence Michael Faust and express their appreciation for a job well done, now therefore be it resolved by the City of Morgantown that the mayor present this resolution to Clarence Michael Faust adopted this third day of May 2021, Ronnie Thompson, mayor, Sally Sandy, City Clerk. Do I have a motion to accept this resolution?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
I'm going to ask Butch McSwain if he'll meet with Clarence Michael Faust. Mike, if you'll come up to the podium?
We now know your full name.
Yes, I do. That's right.
Mike, to repeat, on behalf of the mayor and the council, the citizens, and your fellow employees that you worked with, I want to thank you for the time you've spent and the dedication you've shown. As a personal note, I'd like to welcome you to the Brotherhood of the Retired.
Well, appreciate it. Mike, would you like to say something, please?
I'm not going to say much, but I'll just say thank you for supporting the Aquatic Center. It's a very expensive operation, and we've done a wonderful job, in my opinion, there serving the community. And I'm going to miss it, already have. So, thank you.
Next on our agenda is a resolution for the retiring K-9 Echo. A K-9 that was assigned to the Morgantown Public Safety. I'd like to read that resolution. "Whereas Police K-9 Echo has faithfully served the Morgantown Department of Public Safety since he was placed into service in May 2019. And whereas Echo was previously assigned to PSO Michael William Miller for a period of one and a half years before being reassigned to PSO Daniel Gorbinski, sorry, for a period of six months of service. And whereas Echo has been certified by the North American Police Working Dog Association in the following areas: obedience, narcotic detection, tracking, area search, article search, and apprehension. Whereas Echo has assisted in the location of several missing children and the apprehension of multiple suspects. And whereas Echo has made numerous finds of controlled substances. And whereas Echo has rendered a valuable service to the Morgantown Department of Public Safety along with the community in which he served. And whereas Echo has performed his canine responsibilities as a professional police dog with the highest standards. And whereas Section 160A-266D of the North Carolina General Statutes provides in pertinent part that, quote, "A city may discard any personal property that possesses a potential threat to the public health or safety," end quote. Now therefore be it resolved that the City Council of the City of Morgantown as follows: Section 1, Police K-9 Echo is hereby retired from service and declared to be surplus property. Section 2, the city's ownership interest in Echo is hereby transferred to former PSO William Miller for the purchase price of $500 in connection of and on the condition that William Miller accept full responsibility for providing adequate shelter, care, and supervision of Echo for the remainder of Echo's life without any funding or other assistance from the city. And Section 3, the city hereby recognizes the distinguished service of Police K-9 Echo to the Department of Public Safety and to the citizens and residents of Morgantown. This resolution being adopted by the City of Morgantown in open session during the regular meeting held on 3rd of May 2021. Do I have a motion to accept this resolution?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Echo could not be with us tonight. He's already on vacation, so we're good to go. We have a presentation of, had a presentation of a service pin. Danny Lyle, who's a public safety fire engineer for 25 years, could not be with us tonight, but that will be presented to him at a later time. Under public advocacy, we have tonight a public safety annual report. I'll call on Chief Tony Lautermit to come forward and present the chief's annual report or the department's annual report. Each of you have that report on your desk, I believe.
Thanks for having me this evening. I'm just going to speak very briefly on the annual report from 2020. We do one of these annual reports every year at the end of the year. Usually gets put together within the first couple of months of the following year. 2020 was a trying year for everybody, and we were no exception to that. During the year of 2020, we had five retirees, and four of the five that retired were supervisors with at least 20 years of service. For each one, some right at 30. So as you can see, that's a lot of experience and supervision. And we lost, but we are working to regain that back with our dedicated employees we have now. Our mission statement at Public Safety is, "We are committed to protect the lives, property, and constitutional rights of all residents and visitors to our community by providing professional law enforcement and fire protection services." We carry that out through our core values of integrity, professionalism, honor, accountability, respect, and equality. We expect our officers to abide by those values every day, on and off duty, and our citizens expect that as well. I'm going to go briefly through Part 1 crimes, and these are our index crimes. The Uniform Crime Report is reported. This is reported to them through the federal government, and those are our violent crimes and our property crimes. And I'm not going to talk about all crimes, but these are the Part 1 crimes for 2020. And those Part 1 crimes are murder, forcible rape, robbery, and aggravated assault. And there was a no percentage change as far as from 2019 to 2020 of those. The exact amount and number of each of those crimes fell in 2020 as in 2019, and they are both still significantly lower than 2018, as you can see. Now, property crimes is the next section below that, burglary, larceny, motor vehicle theft, and arson. And that was a 9% increase over the previous year. And if you look at that mainly from larcenies, larcenies were increased 20% from the previous year. And I direct a lot of that, contribute a lot of that to shoplifting, larcenies, concealing of merchandise at our businesses like Walmart, Lowe's, Royal King. We have significantly increased in larcenies at those locations. And people being home through the pandemic allowed them to go out and shop, and we didn't lose any business from that, as you can see, unfortunately. As part of the Part 1 crimes, I listed on here the arrests for 2020 as well. We had a 25% increase in arrests of the Part 1 crimes. And again, if you look across there, you can see that burglary and larceny was an increase of 400% and 30%. 400% is a little misleading. We had four arrests and didn't have any prior year. But in the larceny, we had 100 more arrests for larcenies in 2020 as comparable to 2019. So that's good that we arrested more people, but not good that we had more larcenies committed. Total calls for service this past year, we had 35,334 calls of service. That is down 4,000 calls for service compared to 2019, or 11% decrease. And if you look on there, those are our top 10 categories. The top 10 is the most calls for service amongst the 125 categories you can list. And vehicle stops is the biggest decrease there, as you see. We stopped 4,000 less vehicles last year than we did prior year. And that has directly contributed to our officers not having, through COVID restrictions, not having as much interaction with our citizens and putting themselves and citizens in contact with each other. So that was limited as much as we could. So that is that decrease equivalent of what we would actually would have had if you added that 4,000 to 35, would have put us right at 39,000, which is what we had in 2019. But we were still busy. That averages out to 97 calls per 12-hour shift for our officers. So you can see, we have a lot of calls going on. And just look at that list there, and you can see we had 2,622 just 911 hangups last year. 4,964 or 4,980 extra patrols and over 1,800 speak-to-offer calls. So we're just constantly having calls, constantly busy, and we manage all of those very well. Traffic analysis, I'm going to talk about a little bit here about traffic accidents. Last year, we had 1,029 reported accidents. That is down from 1,215 from 2019, and we had 163 injuries from those accidents, which is also down from 251 in 2019. At the bottom of that, three-year summary of DWIs and citations, a correlation with traffic citations, we had 3,000 less citations issued last year, direct correlation of the 4,000 less vehicle stops. But the DWI arrests stayed the same or close to the same from the fall of the previous year. So the COVID restrictions didn't hinder people from drinking and/or driving. Fire statistics for 2020, we received and responded to 661 fire calls last year. That is consistent with the last three years. And so those are calls from false alarms, structural fires, CPR calls, entrapment and vehicle accidents, and what have you. So we kept busy with those as well. I'm going to talk just a couple of minutes about our training. This is also listed in the annual report. Last year, we conducted over 12,408 hours of training, and that consists of police training and law and fire training. We had 4,400 hours of police training and over 8,000 hours of fire training. That too was impacted by COVID restrictions. Last year in 2019, we had over 18,000 hours of combined training with 7,000 hours of law enforcement training. But we were still able during that 4,000 hours of law enforcement training, you see there, to be able to have critical incident training, use-of-force training, de-escalation, firearms, legal updates, amongst several other courses of training that we are required to have. And going into this year and into next year, training is opening back up, restrictions are lessening, so therefore we will get back to the amount of training we've been accustomed to taking. And the last slide here is about our community engagements. With COVID restrictions, we were significantly restricted in what we could do in the community. On a non-restricted year, we participate in over 28 community engagement events a year. And that is everything from the Citizen Police Academy, Partnership for Change, Faith ID Program, Volunteer at the Soup Kitchen, and what have you. We were still able to do a few of these engagements this past year, but not like we normally would do. And we look eager, and we're eager to get back into community as the restrictions ease and get more involved, which we think is a necessity, and it's what we think is needed. That is it. This copy of this report will be posted on our webpage in its full entirety, and the council has the full version as well and a hard copy.
Tony, thanks. Any council have questions for Tony?
Thank you to all your staff for the good year.
Thank you very much for your support.
Thank you, Tony.
Thank you, Tony.
Next on our agenda is a proclamation for Public Works Week. I'd like to read that proclamation. "Whereas public works, infrastructure, facilities, and services are vital importance to the health, safety, economy, and overall well-being of the people of Morgantown. And whereas such facilities and services could not be provided without the dedicated efforts of public work professionals, engineers, administrators, and other employees representing all levels of government who are responsible for and must plan, design, construct, operate, and maintain the public work facilities essential to serve our citizens. And where it is vital that the public understand and appreciate the importance of the jobs performed by the dedicated employees of Public Works. And whereas it is in the public interest for citizens to learn and understand the importance of public works programs such as drinking water, sanitary and storm sewers, streets and highways, public buildings, and solid waste collection and disposal. Now therefore, I, Ronnie Thompson, Mayor of the City of Morgantown, do hereby proclaim the week of May 16 through 23, 2021, as Public Works Week with the theme of Stronger Together. And furthermore, I call upon all citizens in this community to gain knowledge of and maintain a progressive interest in the public work needs and programs essential to our everyday lives, and to recognize the daily contributions which public works employees make to ensure our health, safety, comfort, and quality of life. Proclaim this third day of May 2021, Ronnie Thompson, Mayor, Sally Sandy, City Clerk. Do I have a motion to accept this proclamation?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
I'm going to ask, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Ask Chris Hawkins if he'll present that to our Public Works Director.
Michael, it is an honor for me to present this proclamation to you as our Public Works Director. The services that your department provides are things that often we take for granted but that we need and rely on every single day. So thank you for all that you do, your leadership and that your department provides for us.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Michael, would you like to make a few comments? I know you're new in that position, so...
Yes, sir.
What have you found out? Did it leave any hidden secrets for you?
No. I mean, I'm just taking it one day at a time. But first, I'd just like to say thank you for the recognition. It really means a lot. I got to give all the credit to the folks that come in and give 110% every day in my department and other departments. Like you said, I mean, the Public Works Week is recognized nationally every year, and this year it's Stronger Together is the theme. And I think Morgantown's a good example of that. If you look at what we do with the staff we have, I think that says a lot there. And then lastly, I would just like to say thank you for your continued support.
Thank you, Michael, for a good job. Next, I'd like to read a mayoral proclamation of National Day of Prayer. "Whereas the 70th anniversary of the National Day of Prayer will be held on Thursday, May 6, 2021, with the theme, 'Lord, pour out your love, life, and liberty,' based on verse 2, verse 2 Corinthians 3:17, which is, quote, 'Now the Lord is the Spirit, and where the Spirit of the Lord is, there is liberty.'" And whereas a national day of prayer has been a part of our national heritage since it was declared by the First Continental Congress in 1775 and the United States Congress in 1952 approved as a joint resolution that, quote, "The president shall set aside and proclaim a suitable day each year other than a Sunday as a national day of prayer on which the people of the United States may turn to God in prayer and mediation in churches, in groups, and as individuals." And whereas the United States Congress in 1988 by Public Law 100-307, as amended, establishes, quote, "An act to provide for setting aside the first Thursday in May as the day of which National Day of Prayer is celebrated. And whereas leaders and citizens of our communities, cities, states, and nation are afforded the privilege of prayer with the joy of seeking divine guidance, strength, protection, and comfort from Almighty God, I, therefore I, Ronnie Thompson, Mayor of the City of Morgantown, do hereby proclaim May 6, 2021, as a day of prayer throughout the City of Morgantown. I commend the observance to all citizens adopted this third day of May 2021." I'm going to ask Mayor Pro Tim Windecato if she will make that presentation to, I believe, Janice Pranshster.
Janice, it's always a great day, and I'm sorry you can't be on the courthouse again, but maybe soon you can come back. And grateful for the First Baptist Church for allowing you to continue with this wonderful observance.
Thank you. Thank you, Wendy, very much. Thank each of you very, very much for joining so many people that have gone before us to pray for our communities. And we are looking forward to inviting all of you to come to the Baptist Church Thursday at 12 o'clock. The observance begins. And it is our privilege to be able to ask God to bless us. Thank you.
Thank you, Janice. We have a further announcement. There will be a meeting, a form master meeting on May 11 at the Community House. Sally, would you give us some details on what master meeting would be about?
Yes, there's been an invitation sent out to all individuals who own multi-unit properties in looking at a change that you all considered, seems like a really long time ago now, but back in February of 2020, to look at starting with July of 2021 as a change in our billing system. And again, it is for properties that have multiple units and use a master meter. We have sent individual invitations to all of those folks, and we'll be holding an in-person session, as we talked about a long time ago.
Are there two sessions?
There are. There's a morning one and an evening one, so everyone should have, be able to make that work in their schedule.
Thank you. More events coming downtown. The farmer's market is open for the season on Saturdays from 8:00 a.m. to noon at 300 Beach Street, and on Wednesdays from 12:00 to 4:00 p.m., the mini-market at 111 North Green Street. I'd like to take a moment to offer counsel or offer our sympathies to our councilman for the recent loss of Butch. So we're with you, and we hope you are doing well.
Thank you, Mayor. And the contacts from everyone have been incredibly appreciated, and I do thank everyone, especially the council.
Next on our agenda is the North Carolina Municipal Power Agency One. Any updates, Sally?
There is nothing to report at this time.
Next on our agenda is the consent agenda. I believe there are four items. Sally, will you cover those?
Absolutely. You are correct, and would ask that you all consider approving those in a single motion for those viewing at home. Those include regular meeting minutes from the April 5 council meeting, a budget amendment for an insurance reimbursement for Public Works in the amount of $3,528.61, and then two agreements for Compass, and these deal with our internet connectivity. The first is a six-year agreement with Conterra, which provides fiber connectivity from our head end, from Charlotte to our head end. That is at a cost of $5,500 per month. And then an agreement with Cogent, which is a second provider for internet connectivity, again, coming from Charlotte and for our bandwidth, and that is at a cost of $2,500 per month. Both of those items are included in the Compass Cable budget.
Do any members wish to have anything removed from the consent agenda? If not, do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. The next is a public hearing in consideration of the City of Morgantown Community Developed Block Grant, CBDG, entitlement program action plan for fiscal year 21, 2021, 2022. I'll now declare the public hearing open. Call on Lisa Miller if she'll give us some details.
Good evening.
Good evening.
The purpose of this public hearing is to receive citizen input on the action plan for the fiscal year July 1, 2021, through June 30, 2022. We do this every year to receive input for the activities. This year, we will be receiving $157,364 of entitlement money from HUD. As an estimated revenue from our small business loan repayments, we have $30,000. And in unspent CDPG funds from prior years, we have $97,766. That gives us a total of $285, $285,130,000 for a overall budget for our program this year. So we are looking at putting $75,000 in our small business loan program. We've had a lot of interest in that lately. I continue to have people to call me, had somebody call me today asking about that. So that's been a great program throughout the years. Public infrastructure and improvements, we're putting $130,058 in that for future projects. Acquisition, we've got $5,000. Clearance in spot and blighted areas, we have $20,000. Grants to nonprofit, we have $23,600. And then administration, we have $31,472. So those are the activities that we have set forth to do this year.
Thank you, Lisa.
And I'd like to remind everyone that this does not include the COVID relief dollars that we have received. Those are in a separate pot, still working on help with rental assistance and utility payment assistance, and there may be some more activities in that as we go forward. But that is a separate pot of money.
Thank you. It is a public hearing. Would any member of the public wish to speak at this time? If you'll please come forward, your name and address.
Greetings. Beverly Carlton, Director of Oliphiel Community Economic Development Corporation at 200 South College Street here in Morgantown. I look forward to this every year, talking to you guys about this, because this is an opportunity for us to join with you, working together to improve our community in so many ways. So I have read through the CDPG plan, and I do have some questions, comments for your Is this the first public hearing for this plan this year? So will there be a second public hearing?
Not that I'm aware of.
We had a public meeting in February. It was advertised in the paper, so we can have a public meeting. And then this is our second public hearing, or the public hearing for the HUD entitlement program.
Thank you, Lisa.
Thank you, Lisa. Also, if you have the plan, could you follow along with me on page 64? Page 64, it has a statement that says, "Stimulating homeownership opportunities for low- and moderate-income home buyers by providing down payment assistance and first-time home ownership counseling through Home Uniform Consortium Program." My question here is, can Oliphiel be listed as an organization providing pre-homeownership education and mortgage readiness counseling? counseling as a local provider, along with the Home Uniform Consortium Program on this page?
Can you answer that?
Well, Lisa, could they be listed, please?
Sure. And so what she's looking at is from our consolidated plan that was adopted. Last year, it goes from 2020 through 2024. So it's an overall five-year plan. And yeah, I mean, we can add, we can add their name, if that's what you'd like for me to do.
Okay.
Um, I had an alternative, though, if you want to hear that. The alternative to this, though, is if it cannot be, can the statement be changed to, "Stimulating homeownership opportunities for low and moderate income home buyers by providing down payment assistance through the Home Uniform Consortium Program," period. Also, "Supporting local HUD-approved housing counseling agencies in their effort to educate and prepare mortgage-ready buyers." Um, the reason I'm saying that is because we are local and Home Uniform Consortium, home, the consortium is located, of course, in, uh, Lenora. And then I don't know if there are, there is not a housing counseling agency in Caldwell County, because we serve Caldwell County also. So I just wanted it to be clear that there is a local provider for homeownership counseling.
Beverly?
Yes, ma'am.
Will you send us that language?
Sure.
Exactly what you just said. Can you just email it so we make sure that, that we're getting it right, please?
Okay. Thank you. Okay. On page 71, my question is, what is the actual amount of funding available under the CDBG program to date? And I heard Lisa just say $285,135 for the program. On page 71, however, I don't understand what the $597.28 is. $597, $7,028.
Okay, so that is, we estimate, like, how mu, like, we don't know every year how much we're going to get. So last year, we got like 146. This year, we've got more. We're getting 143. So that's an estimate of the five years of funding that, that we'll be getting.
As opposed to a one-year?
As opposed to one year.
But that five years relates to the five years of the action plan, is what that number relates to.
So it has to be spent proportionally over that five-year period?
No, that's just really an estimate they require of what we think the monies will be over the five years. So basically, you take an average and, you know, like, we got 146, you get 157, you may get 143. So you're just kind of guessing, honestly.
So this money is available for public programs to apply for?
Say that one more time?
Would this money be available for organizations or public programs that benefit the public to apply for?
The, the money that we will be considering tonight that will be available will be $285,000, is what we're estimating.
Okay.
Does that answer your question?
But we have it designated for certain usage.
Correct. For, for application within those uses. Mm-hmm.
But the other money is available?
No, that is not money that's available. That is a requirement by HUD to list an estimate of what we think we're going to get in a five-year period.
Okay. On page 76, it's talking about the homeless population and the services that you work with in the city to deliver services to the homeless. Um, not all homeless persons, not all of the homeless population are eligible for the existing homeless shelters. Therefore, they are still walking the street. Um, and I know the Continuum of Care is working on a plan to work with transitional housing and those things. But my question right now, or concern, is that a few additional services that could be provided for homeless population? Because we try to kind of treat homeless people as unwanted, uh, that they're nuisance. We don't want you here. Uh, please leave. But we can offer them things, because we work with some of those people that don't have shelter. And we offer them kindness every day that we can. And we offer them what we have available for us. I know that you had been talking about having a, an electrical charging station that's going to be built in the future for automobiles. Homeless people need cell phone charging stations. They need charging stations for the battery-operated or, yeah, other operated appliances that they may have. They also need water for personal use. Um, and public trash cans close to the Burke Mission Station, so they have a place to put them. There's not any trash cans out there unless they've been put out there recently. Therefore, we have the trash all over the Olivefield's, um, mortgage and ready, mortgage readiness and rental counseling programs provide education and printed materials on lead-based paint. So you have information on here that the continuum, Uni4, I'm sorry, Uni4 Consortium provides that information. But we provide this information locally, too. As a HUD-approved housing counseling agency, we are required to provide that to everybody that comes into our homeownership classes and asks for it with the rental counseling. So can this be integrated into the housing policies and procedures that you have listed here?
Lisa can correct me if I'm wrong, but I'm assuming that's, that's the same as before, where we talked about adding in the language where the Uni4 Consortium is listed to also add Olivehill. Correct?
Uh, on page 84, that's talking about anti-poverty strategies, jurisdiction goals, programs, and policies for reducing the number of poverty-level families. Um, how are the jurisdictions, poverty-reducing goals, programs, and policies coordinated with the Affordable Housing Plan? I'm sorry, I skipped something. So that doesn't make sense, does it? So I'll go back. Okay. On that page, also, it's talking about the, uh, City of Morganton set up an Affordable Housing Committee. Uh, can Olivefield become a member of the Affordable Housing Task Force formed by the City Council to discuss and address the needs of affordable housing in the local communities? Being a HUD-certified housing counseling agency would bring current information to the table. Uh, I don't know if you're aware, but, uh, 2016, 2017, under the Consumer Protection Financial Bureau, the HUD housing, the counseling agencies have to now take a national certification test to continue to operate as a housing counseling agency. We have passed the test and we are certified. So therefore, we would bring a lot of information to the table that we receive from HUD on a daily basis. Can we be a member of this Affordable Housing Task Force?
I'm sure. I'm not aware of that task force, actually. I, I, I am aware of a community housing task force that we have city council folks and city staff people that have been participating for several years.
Okay. So this language needs to be changed, because it says, "The city has an Affordable Housing Task Force that was formed by the City Council to discuss and address the needs of affordable housing in the local communities." And whatever committee that you have, we feel we should be a part of it.
Sure.
Also, on page 84, it's talking about the down payment assistance program with the Uni4 Consortium. Olivehill provides for, I'm sorry, page 84. Okay, page 84 is, "How are the jurisdiction poverty-reducing goals, programs, and policies coordinated with this Affordable Housing Plan?" What I wanted to add to this is that Olivehill does provide foreclosure prevention, loss mitigation services, also financial literacy, and credit counseling. These steps assist homeowners or renters with affordability issues. Also, Olivefield integrates all down payment assistance programs, including North Carolina Housing Finance Agencies, Community Partners Loan Pool, the Uni4 Consortium, Freddie Mac, and Fannie Mae's Down Payment Assistance Program. So these are programs that can help with affordable housing and Affordable Housing Plan. And these are programs that we actually administer through our office. On page 86, it says, this, page 86, under SP 80 Monitoring 91.230, "Describe the standards and procedures that the jurisdiction will use to monitor activities carried out in furtherance of the plan and will use to ensure long-term compliance with requirements of the programs involved, including minority business outreach and the comprehensive planning requirements." At the end of this statement, that you have, you have a minority business are considered on programs that require bidding. I don't understand why this question is here, I mean, why this statement is here. Um, because it doesn't fit what this statement says. There's no statement about minority business outreach and the comprehensive planning requirements.
So when we bid a project, we make sure that minorities are able to bid. We put stuff in the newspaper. So that's basically what that statement is saying, that we make sure that minority businesses, uh, are able to bid on anything that we have, that we bid out.
Then this needs to be clarified, because it looks like, it looks like, including minority business outreach and the comprehensive planning requirements. It needs to be clarified so that when people read it, they'll not say it like me, what does this mean? Um, and last, on the agenda item, your agenda tonight, other business B5, is consideration of a resolution of intent to sell surplus property on North Green Street. As city-owned property, is this a buildable lot?
We, I can answer that.
Louis?
We will be addressing that at that point. It's, uh, the statutory process for sale requires that when we sell, it's subject to upset bids, and we have to advertise it. So anybody who wants to do an upset bid, we're not making any guarantees that it's buildable. It's zoned for residential. I have no reason to believe it isn't buildable, but I'm not, the city certainly isn't affirming that. Let's put it that way.
Okay. On page 89, um, this is after expected resources, AP 15, expected resources. Um, "If appropriate, describe publicly owned land or property located within the jurisdiction that may be used to address the needs identified in the plan." If this is something, is this property something that could fit this plan? Would this lot fit the plan? On page 89?
I have, we're not making any affirmations, as I say, that this property is to be used for any particular purpose. But, but, if, I assure you, if any, if the council decides to sell that property for this, or to contract to sell, if you know of anyone who thinks that they may have a, a use for this property, encourage them to come forward and put in an upset bid.
Have you already received bids on it?
We have received an offer. That's the way the process works. If, if council wishes to, to sell it, to contract to sell it, they would vote to do so. It would then be advertised, and anyone can come forward with an upset bid, which only requires an increase of 10% over the offer. And that's the way the process works on surplus property.
Okay.
The city has no use whatsoever for that property, by the way.
Okay. Uh, my question is, if you know you have surplus property, why can't it be incorporated in this plan to, to use to do affordable housing development if it's a buildable lots?
It could be used for that purpose, but no one, except the gentleman who's made this proposal, has come forward and offered anything for it.
Okay.
And, but that doesn't mean someone else couldn't.
All right, all right. I'm just looking to the future, that if you ever have any, why not consider it for this use first? That's my statement. Um, I'm through. Uh, do you have any questions of me?
Counsel, have any questions? Beverly, thank you so much.
Thank you.
And you're going to send us that language?
Yes.
Thank you.
Would anyone else, we're still in public hearing, anyone else like to address the counsel on this issue? Seeing no one else, public hearing is now closed. Okay. Um, we need a motion to approve the 21, 2020 action plan as presented. Do I have a motion?
Can we add to that with the, the suggested language changes that Beverly is going to send to us?
Yes.
May I ask if that can be added to our motion?
So what she was reading out of is the consolidated plan.
Yes.
This is a totally different document, but I will be glad to add those to the...
Into it, please.
Thank you.
So can I get the copy of the document that she's talking about? I did request this, and this is what I received. It, it will be ready probably tomorrow. I have to add some stuff from the meeting tonight before it's official. I have to upload some documents. And I have to upload it to HUD before it's official. So I'll be glad to send her that once it's official.
Very good.
Thank you, Lisa. Okay, what's the wish of counsel?
I think a motion is made.
Well, I asked for it.
I'll make a motion to approve the 2021, 2022 action plan as presented. I am confused, though.
And to change our consolidated plan, correct?
I mean, does that have to be a part of this?
We had a five-year plan, and she's asking for the changes in our five-year plan, not in the, in the current year plan. That's right. This is a one-year plan. So we, Beverly's asking for changes in our five-year plan, in our consolidated plan. Do we understand that correctly, Lisa? That's what she's referring to.
That's right. And then this is the one-year action plan.
Right. So I'll stand with the motion I made.
Okay. We have a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Okay.
Now we need a second motion to adopt the...
Now, the, the second part of this becomes, because there's several parts. So this becomes the project budget ordinance for the $285,000, which is what the year action plan deals with, recognizing the $157,364 in new HUD money, the $30,000 in program income that Lisa talked about, which is repayments of loans. And, and that's estimated through the end of the year. And then the unspent CDBG funds from prior years, another estimate. And then you see there what Lisa went through, the small business loans, the public infrastructure acquisition, clearance, grants to nonprofits, and the admin. So this would actually set up the, the budget for the year.
The motion just passed was to approve the action plan.
Correct.
This is to produce, is to approve the budget.
Correct.
Okay. We heard Lisa talk about that budget. Do I have a motion?
Make a motion to adopt the CDBG 2021 project budget.
I'll second it.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Next, we have consideration of an administrative contract with the Western Piedmont Council of Governments. Sally?
Yes, and that is for the administrative portion of, of these dollars. That amount is limited by HUD, and that is to contract for Lisa to continue to administer the program.
What's the wish of counsel?
Motion to approve an agreement with Western Piedmont Council of Governments to administer the CBD BG entitlement program.
Have a motion and have a second.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Next, we have a public hearing in consideration of a zoning ordinance text amendment for compliance with the state... Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Next, we have a public hearing and consideration of a zoning ordinance text amendment for compliance with the state of North Carolina's passage of Chapter 160D Land Use Law into State General Statutes. Philip Luckadoo, Director of Planning and Development, would you please update us?
Sure. Everybody comfortable?
Yes.
It won't, it won't be that bad. Just wanted to pull up a, in case I need to access this website. So, the, as you all may or may not be aware, the state of North Carolina converged two bodies of law dealing with land use. That was Section 153A, which dealt with counties, and 160A, which dealt with cities. That has now converged into one body of, of enabling legislation for zoning and planning, that is 160D. And so, they gave everyone, they basically rewrote the legislation for that. And so, everyone has until, I didn't check to see if it had been extended. It was, it was that everyone had to have everything in place, their ordinance amendments in place by July 1 of this year. There was some talk of that being extended. I don't know if it got extended or not. However, because our ordinance, the ordinance that we now have that was written in 2014, adopted in 2015, or made effective rather in 2015, we got, we got out pretty, did pretty well as far as the amount of amendments that we had to make. But they are as follows, and, and one is that we are looking to amend Section 3.2.2.3, and that is for consistency with the, let's see, let me get to that one. Let's see. It is to delete 3.2.2.3 in its entirety, and that has to do with the age of mobile homes. And that we, our current ordinance says that they have to be a 1994 or newer. That gets rid of that requirement, and so, if anyone wants to move in any mobile home of any age, as long as it meets certain codes, it, it is, they're able to do that. The next section is for Section 2.1.4.3, and it would read as follows, and, and this is dealing with the powers and duties of the Board of Adjustments. And that just includes, because the 160D took away the ability to do, to, to create conditional use zoning and conditional use permits, and, and rather than doing that, you now have what's called a special use permit. So we have to amend our code to allow for the Board of Adjustments to review and take action on special use permits. That was a section that we were very fortunate in, that this, our new code already did away with conditional use zoning, and so we didn't have to make really any wholesale changes in that area. We also are amending Section 3.4.7H. And in 3.4.7H, we deal with telecommunications towers, and if those towers are in excess of 100 feet, they require approval by the Board of Adjustments. That will now be called, and really the only thing that's being changed is that is now called, instead of being called a zoning approval, it's being called a special use permit. And those, and those are the changes. And I can go over the exact language if, if you like, but in each one of those sections, we're just changing to issue, the language would read, to issue a special use permit. And so that's, that would take care of those requirements. Then we are looking to amend Table 3.1, and that is, if you've ever been in any of my office, or, or Jesse's office, or Mike Kirby's office, and ask, is something permitted in, on, at this address? And we pull up a, a table of permitted uses, we will tell you, yes, it's permitted, but it has to meet these conditions. Well, those, that language, the word "conditions" constitutes, constitutes conditional use zoning, so we are changing that to just say that that is a limitation. So instead of "conditions," it will read "limitations." And this, or this amendment affects that change. And finally, we would amend Section 3.4.7. Again, that's in another section, another area of the code that says, replacing the word "conditions" with limitations. And that's just outside of the, not in the permitted uses table, but in another section of the code. It's actually in subsection H4 and H5. That concludes our 160D amendments. We have several others that we'll get there.
Thank you, Philip. This is a public hearing. Would anyone like to speak in favor of, or ask information concerning 160D? If not, public hearing is now closed. I need a motion?
Mr. Mayor, may I interrupt before we make the motion?
Sure.
The ordinance that's attached incorporates all of these changes, but the way it was drawn up, there was a series of different motions, just to be clear what we're talking about here.
Right.
So all three motions are needed, then?
Yes.
Okay.
What's the wish of counsel?
Make a motion to remove A of Section 3.2.2.3, development standard within Section 3.2 overlay district section. This action is consistent with the approved land use plan, as it is simply applying North Carolina's statutory limits to the City of Morganton zoning ordinance.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Have another motion?
Motion to make reference to special use permits for quasi-judicial decisions in the applicable sections 2.1.4.3 and 3.4.7 of the zoning ordinance. This action is consistent with the approved land use plan, as it is simply aligning North Carolina Chapter 160D terminology with the City of Morganton zoning ordinance terminology.
Have a motion. Do I have a second?
A second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Do I have another motion?
I'll enter the motion to convert the terminology of "conditions" to "limitations" when referencing special requirements for certain uses on the permitted use table 3.1, and subsequent sections making reference to "conditions." This action is consistent with the approved land use plan, as it is a requirement of Chapter 160D, and is only making clarity in, to planning terminology, and does not change the actual zoning procedure within the zoning ordinance.
Thank you, Butch. Do I have a motion? Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Next order of business is another public hearing and consideration of a zoning ordinance text amendment to allow staff-initiated amendments. That public hearing is now in session. Philip, would you help us with the zoning ordinance text amendment?
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. So currently, the only folks that are able to petition to bring about a text amendment to the zoning code would be this body, City Council, Planning and Zoning Commission, or any individual withstanding in the city. The way that staff, if, if staff recognizes a change that needs to happen, and, and it comes about because of issues of where we enforce the ordinance and we need to, we need to make a change, our process to, currently, is that we take that to Planning Commission. Let's say we take that next week at our regularly scheduled meeting in May, and then we ask the Planning Commission to look at it and to consider it. Planning Commission looks at it and considers it, and if they say yes, then they say, yes, we would like you to bring back to us a proposed amendment. We would bring that back to the Planning Commission then in June for a public hearing and consideration, and then it would move, and I know this doesn't work in this case because we don't meet in July, but if we were to meet in July, then it would come before us in July. As it is now, it will come before this council in August. So, in this particular instance, that could take a period of four months, as opposed to, what would, what we are proposing is that if a, if staff isn't enabled to bring forth a, an amendment, then it would, it basically accelerates it by a month. We'd take that amendment straight to Planning Commission. Planning Commission makes a recommendation, and it goes straight to council, if, if all is favorable.
Planning and zoning have voted 8-0 to approve this?
Planning and zoning has, at their April 8 meeting, voted unanimously to recommend this. Yes, sir.
What's the wish of counsel?
Make a motion to approve a zoning ordinance text amendment to allow for staff initiation of zoning text amendments. This amendment is consistent with the Mission 2030 land use plan.
Have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Did, did we ask anybody to, it is a public hearing.
Excuse me. Yeah. Anybody else want to speak before we take a vote? Sorry.
Sorry about that.
Could I make a suggestion?
Yes.
Okay. You know, I gotta say something. So the next, this item and the following two are all zoning text amendments. And so, I think, and, and we're holding one public hearing on all of them. So I think if Philip can address the other two, then everybody understands what's being considered, and then if anybody wants to speak for or against, they get that opportunity, and then come back and deal with each one as an individual item.
That's probably correct.
My suggestion.
Our next...
Well, you've got a motion on the floor, so you need to...
Do you want to withdraw the motion?
Just table it. I don't know what the right thing is.
Yeah.
Withdraw the motion?
If you just do that. Withdraw the motion.
Are we gonna withdraw it, or?
Go ahead and vote on that one.
Just defer ruling.
Okay.
Voting on it.
We'll defer ruling.
Okay.
For voting.
Our next item is to talk about the zoning text amendments to increase density in the CDB and HID districts. So, I guess I need to clear that hearing open also.
Yeah, it's still the same hearing, I think.
Philip?
Continuing on then.
Yes.
The zoning ordinance currently in Table 4.2 deals with base residential density. In the HID or high intensity district, that base residential density is four. And in the central business district, that is, that base residential district, base residential density is also four. What we are recommending, that, and Planning Commission also at their meeting recommended 8-0, is to increase that base residential density in HID to six, and then in the central business district, to increase that to unlimited. Now that's, it says, it'll say unlimited. Keep in mind that that is also governed by the, the dimensions of the lot, as well as the, the maximum height requirement in the, in that district. That is, that is predicated on the understanding that, we'll say in HID, that you have the ability to incorporate certain items into your design, whether that's building design standards, or sidewalks, or whatever, to, to get performance points that allow you to increase your density. Okay? In the central business district, those are already there as requirements. So it, it made sense to go ahead and, and give, and, and the performance points that we have for central business district, you get so many for already being in the central business district, that it made it really fruitless for us to go through that analysis when all that information was already required, or all those standards were already required in the central business district. That's why we took it from, from four to unlimited, with the restrictions of your height and, and the size of your lot. So that, that covers the, the density recommendation by Planning Commission for a text amendment.
Okay.
We've got one more.
Yes. We have also the public hearing for the zoning text amendment to modify the conditions of development of multifamily dwellings, including business length or width, requirement of internal sidewalks, added street access requirement, and individualized utility, utility meters.
Okay. So, in working with, and, and again, this is a relatively new ordinance, as ordinances go, and then, and as we continue to work with developers and, and new types of cases come up and matriculate through the code, then we notice occasions where that code may need to be changed. This is one of those, those cases, and, and one of those where we brought it before Planning and Zoning. Planning and Zoning said it's a good idea, make me a recommendation. We came back, and now we're here. So we're three months later into this process. I will say that the, if you look at the subject line of your agenda summary, that should say modify the limitations now, since we just made that, that change, for development of multifamily dwellings. In particular, what this does is, within the LID and MID zoning districts, it, it maintains that a building, if you measure on its, along its vertical or horizontal axis, it maintains that it has to be no more than 150 feet. But what it does say is that if you go into the, into the other, all the other zoning districts, that, that 150 feet can increase to 175 feet. And it also says that if you are meeting the performance standards that are, and I'm not going to quote the, the code unless you'd like me to, but for facade articulation and...
Wall materials.
For performance, performance standards set out for our, for facade articulation, then that structure may be constructed, constructed up to a length of 250 feet. So it just provides more flexibility within which to develop, in this case, multifamily buildings, and that supports all of the need for housing that we have and, and whatnot. So, the second part of that change is adding a new subsection to 3.4.2G8, and that is the section that is the, the limitations now for multifamily housing. And what it says is that sidewalks basically be required to connect, if, if you're in a multifamily development and you've got, I don't know, four, five, six, eight buildings, that you have to have sidewalks connecting those buildings, which makes logical sense if people are walking throughout the, the neighborhood. It, it also requires that they connect that sidewalk system to the existing sidewalk system on the street, and then it requires that if there is not a sidewalk system along the street, then they have to construct one for the length of the, or width, rather, of the lot. And that basically goes to provide pedestrian connectivity within the development and within the city, and supports connection to the greenways, to the different areas of town that the greenway ties into, and, and then, and if for nothing else, then it allows them to get to adjacent commercial properties and, and services and things like that that they, that they may need. And then we would also add Section 3.4.2G6A. And that, and that, well, and I've already gone over that, but basically what that is, is that the trigger for that, those sidewalks, is that if that development is more than 10 units. It's, we're not saying if you're developing less, small development, but it's for more than 10 units. And then the last section is, is there is a, currently there's a section in the code that requires that all multifamily developments be master metered. Well, you can imagine in a, let's say Alpine Mills, where are they gonna put 47 meters, or find a place for 47 meters? What this does is it says that, that each unit has to be individually metered, except that to the extent that master metering is allowed and chosen, and in cases where master metering is preferred method, the preferred method, rather, approval must be granted by the city engineer. And, I've already gone over the last section, so. Those are the amendments as have been put before you, and that, I believe, is, are all of them that you can now deliberate and vote on.
All of which are combined into a single ordinance, but it's all the ones we've talked about.
Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak on the zoning ordinance text amendment to allow staff-initiated amendments, zoning text amendments to increase density in CBD and HID, or zoning text amendments to modify the conditions of development for multifamily dwellings? I think those are the three we're involved with right now. Okay. Nobody's speaking. Now the public hearing is closed. What's the wish of counsel?
To make a motion to approve the zoning ordinance text amendment to allow for staff initiation of zoning text amendments. This amendment is consistent with the Mission 2030 land use plan.
Thank you, Chris. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Our second motion?
Motion to increase the base residential density within HID zoning from four dwelling units per acre to six dwelling units per acre. This action is consistent with the Mission 2030 land use plan by encouraging the goals of higher residential density within the designated high intensity districts listed as commercial corridors and planned destination commercial areas on the plan.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second. Thank you, Wendy. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Motion passes. Another motion?
I'll make a motion to increase the base residential density within CBD zoning from four dwellings per, units per acre to unlimited dwelling units per acre. This action is consistent with the approved 2018 downtown master plan by allowing for the diversity and expansion of housing listed in Section 7.4.
Thank you, Butcher. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. The next motion, please.
Motion to approve the conditions for development of multifamily dwellings, including building lengths, widths, requirement of internal sidewalks, added street access requirement, and individualized utility meters. This action is consistent with the approved City of Morganton Mission 2030 land use plan as it meets the intent of the plan by allowing a diverse housing mix while also providing for public safety and building design standards.
Thank you, Chris. Do I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Philip, thank you so much for getting us through that. Next on our agenda is consideration entering into a CDBG small loan agreement with Blythe McNeely Walker, which will be LLC DBA Savvy Bride Boutique.
I'll take that.
Sally, will you take that?
Absolutely. So we talked earlier tonight in our CDBG action plan how popular our small business loan program has been for years. And, and this is another one of those requests. It is for a business at 131 West Union Street. Blythe Walker is looking to open up the Savvy Bride Boutique, which is a business that works under a franchise agreement. And she is looking to hire one full-time and one part-time employee, looking for a $30,000 loan to assist with the outfit in the building, to purchase some inventory and some working capital dollars. In order to qualify for this loan, HUD would require that one job be created. Her business plan and information has been reviewed by our review committee. We do have these funds set aside in our CDBG small business loan program. Dollars are allocated in the current fiscal year. And she will contribute $10,000 of her own capital to this project.
What's the wish of council?
Make a motion to enter to a $30,000 CDBG loan agreement with Blythe Walker, Blythe's Brides LLC, DBA Savvy Bride Boutique, to purchase inventory, outfit, building, and provide working capital for the new business.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Next is consideration of approval of a contract with Sanford-Holzhouser Economic Development Consulting LLC. Sally?
Yes, this is consideration of the second phase of the agreement. You'll recall that you have already approved a study and, and received a report on that. And Tom Johnson, who is a principal partner in the economic development consulting group with Sanford-Holzhouser, feels he got positive enough responses that he would like now to work with us on setting up a shared use space for folks within the community, as well as to work on recruiting some small IT shops, if you will, in the city of Morganton. We believe that with the capabilities offered through Compass and, and high-speed internet that we can do this. Tom is asking in this contract, basically, the fee is for $1,000 per month. He is not going to look for any bonus money related to any job creation relative to the shared space opportunities. However, much like with our BDI recruitments and such, if Sanford-Holzhouser is able to bring us an IT business that is new to our community and locates a business here, invest in capital and employees, if the employees are earning at least $41,840 annually, which is the average of an IT salary within the uniform, they would like $200 per each job created as a bonus for this contract. The contract is a one-year contract, no automatic renewal, and either party can terminate it upon 10 days written notice.
What's the wish of council?
Motion to approve a contract in the form of a letter of engagement memorandum of understanding with Sanford-Holzhouser Economic Development Consulting LLC for consulting services regarding efforts to attract new information technology businesses to Morganton, and to authorize the mayor or the city manager to execute and issue the contract on behalf of the city, together with the additional authority to make such alterations, technical amendments, and changes as may be necessary to implement the contract.
What's the wish of council? Okay, that's the motion. Do I have a second? I'm sorry.
Second.
Chris, thank you. What is, any, any discussion?
I think it's, and with the recent announcement of a billion-dollar campus down in the Research Triangle, was it Apple, whichever, whichever company that, if we could get ahead of the cottage industries, it's going to spring off from that. This offers us a really exciting opportunity and, and looks good. The question I would, I would ask, there is a maximum on the bonuses.
There, there is, and that, that is up to $20,000, which, pretty aggressive at the number of jobs that would be created.
It would be 100 jobs. Be fantastic.
Extremely aggressive, I would say.
Exactly.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Next is consideration of entering into contracts with the North Carolina Department of Environmental Quality for the purpose of constructing and operating two DC fast-charge electric vehicle charging stations. Sally?
Yes, and, and this was mentioned earlier as well. In 2019, the city was awarded two grants that come out of the Volkswagen settlement that, that North Carolina did with them to be able to construct two of these fast-charging stations in the city. Certain requirements on locations and proximity to interstate and, and all sorts of that. We have not been able to take advantage of these dollars yet because the state has not ever approved a budget since we were awarded this money. They have now, how, now however, decided to move forward with this. They've been doing smaller budgets, I don't know what else to call them. And so this has now been approved. We had budgeted the 10% match for this money in the electric fund for this year. The two stations, one will be located at 111 Bush Drive, which is at the Starbucks at exit 105. And then the second location, which we're really excited about, will be at 201 North College Street, which is over near Martha's Park, and on the city-owned property. So we'll have one in downtown and then one out by the interstate. The Martha's Park property just barely fits into the distance that we were allowed to put these from an interstate. We have contracts to sign with DEQ and then certainly hope to move forward with these as quickly as they will allow us to.
What's the wish of council?
I make the motion to approve entering into contracts with the North Carolina Department of Environmental Quality for the purposes of constructing and operating two DC fast-charge electric vehicle charging stations, and to authorize a city manager or development and design director and mayor to execute all necessary contracts and documents to effect the construction and implementation of the DC fast electric vehicle charging stations at 111 Bush Drive and 201 North College Street.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Sally, is it going to be similar to the ones at the Marriott Fairfield? Do you know?
No, I, well, they're all similar, but it's going to be different.
Okay.
Philip, would you like to address that?
Same, but.
It'll be the same, but different.
Similar, but different. Yeah.
Similar, but different, yes. The ones at the Fairfield Marriott service only Tesla vehicles, and, and these are a, they'll service any electric vehicle. There's, there's different, it's kind of more a universal adapter.
Okay.
And they charge, these, these are DC fast-charge, so they charge at a much higher rate, or faster than, than your normal, say, a residential or a slow charge station.
Okay.
I think they charge, do they give most cars a full charge in around, I think it's 60 to 90 minutes is the, is the time.
Okay. Any other questions? All in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Next on our agenda is consideration of amendments to the city's nuisance ordinance. Louis?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The city's nuisance ordinance, which is Chapter 4, Part 8, of course, deals with all the circumstances under which we declare and hopefully abate nuisances or require the owners to abate them. Over the years, it's become obvious to the people who enforce that ordinance that there is need for some updates in it. And that's what the purpose of these amendments are. Generally speaking, the, there are some changes, it's in Section 8-4,002. As far as the definitions of ordinance, it's necessary to define as best you can what makes an ordinance, otherwise you wouldn't be able to enforce it. For instance, we are changing the definition of overgrown vegetation, specifically overgrown grass or weeds, from not exceeding 10, from exceeding 10 inches to instead exceeding 12 inches. That's just a practical change. We would add new subsections defining circumstances of nuisance, such as the discharge of water or other pollutants. A new subsection to make clear that the, allowing mud and other debris to run off a construction site onto the public street and not cleaning it up is a nuisance. That's actually been a problem recently. And also, another new subsection would specify that leaving open doors, windows, or other openings in an abandoned building is a nuisance. In addition, we would completely replace several sections that deal with the procedure for enforcing a nuisance, just to make it a cleaner procedure and to clarify exactly what the code enforcement officer needs to do to enforce. And finally, there would be some change in the penalties. We would make clear that violations of the ordinance are not criminal, are not misdemeanors. The legislature is probably going to force our hand on that anyway, but that instead violations would impose, would result in civil penalties, which are fines, basically. Of course, the ultimate penalty would be to, that the city has the right to impose a lien on the property for the cost of abating a nuisance and then to enforce that. As far as the penalties, it's been determined that our present structure is a bit unreasonable because it, the purpose of the nuisance ordinance obviously isn't to collect penalties, it's to get the nuisance cleaned. And making those penalties ridiculously, frankly, excessive as far as the dollar amounts is of no benefit to the city or its citizens. So we've tried to simplify that and just say, the first violation would be $50, the second violation would be $100, the third violation would be $300, and beyond that, any additional day of violation would be a further $50. That's a little different, and I would point out that I think what's in your packet, there may have been some small changes in the, in the wording that we're suggesting. And when I say we, these amendments were developed with input from the code enforcement officer, other employees in development, design department, and myself as city attorney. Mike Kirby, who's our code enforcement officer and who played a huge role in developing this, couldn't have been done without him, is here tonight and would be also available to answer any questions about the specifics of the ordinance that you might have.
Louis, I'd like to ask, earlier Ms. Edwards spoke about grass and stuff in the front yard, and we have a limitation on grass or weeds, I understand. Would there be any limitation on corn grown in the front yard? I guess that's my question. We have some residents who, who grow corn, of course. There's, I don't see anything in the ordinance, but just for clarification.
Yeah, well, I guess that comes under vegetable gardens heading. Mike, do you want to try to answer that? How, how we would deal with that? There's no specific section on.
Okay.
Growing crops.
Yeah, there's no, there's no section in there about gardens and things like that. I've, I've received several phone calls about, well, not in the front yard, but in the backyards, people are clearing off their lots and putting gardens in, and I mean, there's just nothing in the ordinance that covers that. And I mean, that just goes back to people like growing their own vegetables and not having to go to the store.
Okay.
And now, she also mentioned chicken coops. That, on the other hand, would be governed because, under the animal control ordinance, and there are limitations on that.
Yeah, yeah, they just need to call my office and I'll go out and investigate it. There are sections in the nuisance and in the zoning ordinance that covers locations of chicken coops, how many chickens you can have, and, and things like that.
And no roosters, correct?
No roosters, yeah.
Mike, thank you so much. Any other questions? What's the wish of council?
Motion to amend Section 8-4002 of the city code of ordinances and to replace existing sections 8-4005, 8-4006, 8-4007, and 8-4008 with new sections 8-4005, 8-4006, and 8-4007 as presented to council.
Thank you, Wendy. I have a motion?
May I ask, and if Wendy might want to change that, it's actually new sections, not only those three, but also 4008 and 4009.
Do you accept that amendment to your motion?
Yes.
Do I have a motion? Do I have a second?
Second.
Second, as the motion was amended. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Next on our agenda is consideration of a resolution of intent to sell surplus property on North Green Street. I'll ask our city attorney.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, this is actually, was brought up before with one of our speakers. This is the, it's actually two vacant lots in a platted subdivision totaling one acre. It's on North Green Street. It actually backs up all the way to Rink Street, which is a cul-de-sac. It's, of course, vacant, never has had anything on it. Was part of the original redevelopment, North Green redevelopment property many years ago. This is the same property which council contracted to sell back in 2014, resulting in a series of upset bids, but ultimately, everything fell through because all the bidders in there, I think there were at least three, became concerned about the condition of the property. I think it's well-known, there's, there's some issues with drainage on this property. That being said, an offer has been received from Mr. Mike Chaffaletti to purchase this property for $12,000. It is important to note, the tax value of the property assigned by the county is far more than that. Of course, obviously, it's, the city owns it, so it's not being taxed. We have every reason to believe that the property is, that valuation is probably excessive. The city did attempt to obtain an appraisal on this property, but without spending an undue amount of money, that was not feasible because it wasn't possible to find a clear comp. Mr. Chaffaletti has made very clear that he understands that there are drainage issues on the property, that there are existing storm drain pipes that run under the property. The city would make no warranties about the suitability of the property for any particular construction. If council is interested in selling this property, accepting the offer to sell it for $12,000, we would have to advertise it by public notice according to the statutory procedure, and it would then be open, once it's, from the date of advertising, for 10 days for any upset bid. And of course, if there's an upset bid, then the process is, starts over again automatically beyond that.
And there are restrictive covenants on the property?
Oh, I should have added, yes, there are restrictive covenants on the property, which limit each lot to one single-family residence. As I say, there are two lots. So based on that, the most that could be done on this property would be two single-family residences.
What's the wish of council?
Make a motion to approve a contract for the sale of a tract of approximately one acre at 703 and 705 North Green Street to Mike Chaffaletti for $12,000, conditioned on the completion of the statutory advertising and upset bid process.
Thank you, Chris. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Butch.
And I should have added, Mr. Chaffaletti has tendered the deposit, the 5% deposit that we have there.
Any further discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Next on our agenda is consideration of award of contracts to Tri-County Paving Incorporated. Sally?
Yes, in December of 2020, we contracted with Tri-County Paving to construct the downway, downtown Greenway connector, which is currently under construction, which connects the trailhead at Jefferson Street to Catawba Meadows Park. At the time that we awarded that bid, we talked about the possibility of being able to add two paved connectors that would make it much easier to connect the housing authority and that complex with the Greenway as it is currently being constructed. Otherwise, you have to go all the way around the rec center and all of that. Since that time, we have been able to locate those two and have asked for finalized bids. We had estimates at the time we awarded the bid on the two sections, and Tri-County has given us a quote, the first being $21,638.10, the second one being $9,130.51, for a total of just under $31,000. That money exists in the budget. At the time that we awarded the bid, we awarded a larger contingency in hopes to be able to do this, and we think we can. It was always intended to be treated as a change order to the contract. However, we got grant money involved in that, and DOT doesn't like that idea, and so they would like for us to sign a second contract in order to be able to do these two connections, but we feel very strongly that it is going to make the project better, connect a part of town that, that needs the connection, and it totally, it very much improves the Greenway connection.
What's the wish of council?
Motion to award a contract to Tri-County Paving Incorporated in the amount of $30,768.61 for the construction of two access points connecting Second Street to the Greenway, and to authorize the mayor or the city manager to execute and issue the contract on behalf of the city, together with the additional authority to make such alterations, technical amendments, and changes as may be necessary to implement the contract.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Wendy. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. The next item is consideration of award of contract for Heron Street repairs. Sally?
Yes, so we are asking you to consider another contract award tonight, and that is for a project that would come in and repair and basically improve Heron Street. We've had a failure on that street. We would be using CDBG monies in order to do this, so that gets back to that category we talked about of public infrastructure and, and public facilities. Received, basically, we would be improving storm drainage, piping, backfilling a slope over there, we would replace concrete curbing, repair the roadway, and then mill and redo the whole asphalt surface, 320 linear feet of roadway, in order to make this look nice and to make it a complete project. We received sealed bids. Tuesday, April 27th, we received three bids for the project. The lowest bidder was Midstate Contractors of Hickory. They've done work for us in the past, and they bid $111,206. You have a bid tab in your agenda, the other two bids that we received, Evans Construction of Conley Springs and Tri-County Paving of West Jefferson were significantly higher. Would ask that you consider awarding to the lowest responsive bidder, which would be Midstate.
What's the wish of council?
Make motion to authorize a contract with Midstate Contractors Incorporated of Hickory, North Carolina, in the amount of $111,206 to perform the Heron Street roadway repair project.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Next on our agenda is consideration of appointments to the Human Relations Commission. This is a mayoral appointment, and I'm going to appoint Reverend Wayne Johnson, Captain Jason Wistert, Eric Hunzly to the Human Relations Commission. The term will expire May 3rd, 2024. Anything else to come before this count? We do have one more thing.
Yeah, we do.
30-day vacancy, 30-day notice on vacancies on boards and commissions. On the Board of Adjustment, we have two terms expiring. On the Cable Commission, we have two terms expiring and two vacancies. On Community Appearance, we have three terms expiring. Main Street Advisory, five terms expiring and one vacancy. Planning and zoning, three terms expiring. And Recreation Advisory Committee, two terms expiring and four vacancies. Anyone interested in volunteering, please submit an application on the website and submit that to the clerk of the board. Anything else to come before tonight? A lot of public hearings and a lot of work done, so congratulations, staff, for being well-prepared and coming up with a great agenda. If not, this meeting is adjourned.